Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, April 10th, 2024. The meeting has been properly posted. We have a roll call, please.
Yes, Dr. Khan is excused this evening. Dr. Beer?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
You're all present.
Thank you very much. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Witkowski, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, Community Reintegration Center presentation. Ms. Bastian, please.
Hi, everyone. We're really excited to share with you today. So again, my name is Claire Bastian. I'm one of these associate principals at the high school, and I also support the Community Reintegration Center. What you'll notice here is that the name doesn't necessarily start with that. We have really the name that now shows up on our students' diplomas and on their transcripts. And this is really based on student feedback. So when we think about the students that we serve, they are getting their high school diploma and want to make sure that it's representative of who they are. And so instead of seeing maybe a youth program, since these are students who are 18 or older right now, they aren't youths. So how could we better represent their accomplishment in a way that stays true to them? So you'll see that we are South Campus Franklin Public Schools in that way. New addition also, can you go back one more time?
Sorry.
I'm so sorry. Few different things on the intro slide, as you'll also see that we have mascot represented here. So really cool, exciting addition is that our students at the CRC were given a task to create their mascot, so to find connection to our school district, keeping in the cat theme, but also then honoring the school colors of Franklin High School, kind of mesh it all together. So this was a rendition done by one of our students, voted by the students. It's the number one submission, and then it was digitized for us. So we are the Leopards. All right, thanks. All right, so we have our two individuals in front of us who are part of our teams. We have Isaiah Rembert, who is our teacher at the CRC or Franklin Public Schools South, and then Mila Acosta is our school counselor, which we get to talk about today. So just want to remind you of our mission and vision. I think it's really important for us to continue to ground in them and really hope to see that you see our vision living out in our school goal this year and what we've done to attain it, really thinking about how our students are navigating their own path, achieving their goals and dreams, and positively then contributing to our community. So just a quick overview of where we are at with our numbers and our school population right now. So currently, we have served or are currently serving 64 students. That's not what we currently have in the space in the moment, but throughout the year, just know that we have a transient population, come in and out. And so throughout the year, we have served and supported 64 students. Some ways that we continue to grow our population within our school is any student that is of school age, we still have on a list, and we make sure that we touch point as much as we can with the students of age to see if they want to attend and if they fit that criteria. But we also then have students that come in requesting school. So either way, we create that opportunity for them based on either our touch point or they're connecting with us. Oh, sorry, one more.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I'm really not anticipating well. That's me doing that.
It just keeps us on our toes. The other part, though, is somewhat new, well, it is new, is this year, we've been able to partner with MPS. So due to connections made, we've been able to have the communication with them so that if there is a student that is potentially going to be a resident with us, we have that communication right away, understand the credits and where they would be being able to come with us. So we can enroll them more seamlessly, make sure that we make that connection, make sure they're supported upon entry. Now you can go. Yes. So our building goal is really specific to our space and what our students need. This was really based on student feedback throughout our year, too. Thinking about what our students need is really thinking about when they're leaving us. So what do they have once they leave us for an academic and career plan? And so that was really our main point here, is we give them some tools while they're with us, but really want them to leave with every tool possible so that they have the best line of success. So what you'll notice is we have some specific parameters on who we are making sure we find success with completing that plan with. Again, with our students there for limited time, we have some parameters that we want to be able to give them, you know, educational components beyond this, but also want to make sure that we do this for students who are with us for a more significant amount of time. And so they're able to complete the plan that you have in front of you to just reference if you want to look through it. And if you have any questions, go ahead throughout. But also, we've been able to meet this goal and exceed it. So we have the students that are with us, and then we still continue to try and do this with every student possible.
All right, good evening. So I want to talk a little bit more about why we chose this goal, this building goal. And one of the big reasons we chose the building goal is because we know that correctional education reduces recidivism, which is huge. Anytime you work in corrections, particularly correctional education, we know that one of the big goals is to reduce recidivism. And we know that students who participate in school, they significantly reduce the rate of recidivism. We also know that students who participate in school while they're incarcerated are actually three to four times more likely to continue their education after they get released and pursue either secondary education, whether that's GED or high school diploma, and/or go on to continue with post-secondary education. And we also know, perhaps the biggest deal, is that students who participate in correctional education, once they're released, they have a much higher rate of employability, not only in just minimum wage jobs, but jobs that are really living wage jobs, which is why we really chose to focus on transition for our building goal, because that's so important to what we do. So we know that's important. But the thing is, we didn't necessarily have the capacity we needed to meet the social and emotional needs of our students, which is why we really put a lot of time and attention into finding a counselor. And Mila has been a wonderful addition to our team. And one of the things that she's really helped out with is really trying to build connections within the CRC and also building connections outside of the CRC so that our students have the supports that they need to be successful as a transition from incarceration back into the community. And one of the things that she's done is really focus on creating this transition plan. And that transition plan, first I should say, really reflects what the students have asked of us. They said they know that they need support once they get out. They know that they need a positive role model when they get out. They know that they have to have a plan in order so that they don't recidivate when they get out, which is one of the reasons that we've focused on a transition plan. And as part of that process, when they graduate, we have our students present their transition plan to us, or I should say, to the group. And it's really, really exciting because they talk about the mentors. They talk about what they've learned and what they've received during their time with us. They talked about the people they can call on and talk to when they may be struggling. And so that's been really, really, really huge. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mila, who can talk a bit more in depth about that transition plan and the work that she's been able to spearhead since she's been with us.
Good afternoon. Good evening, everybody. Not good afternoon. So looking at this part right here, looking at the resources and the partnerships with MPS. Luckily for me, I do have a lot of resources coming from MPS. I worked out a central office for a bit in having some mentorship there for myself. I worked at BLMA, which stands for Black and Latino Male Achievement. And so during that time, we focused in on making sure that our students, black and brown males within the school district, were supported, given things that we may see on the news and things that they're going through at home that we may not always see. And so with that, I was able to then create partnerships with my old department and then also a partnership with a social worker that works particularly with people that have been incarcerated through MPS. She helps me when students are being released. And then also, I just like send her the transcript so she's able to go over what we've done with them here and then also what they've done at MPS previously, and then try to get them enrolled in any type of alternative education schools that they have there or any type of alternative education programs within a regular, traditional setting in a school. The other thing that I've tried to work on is the Family Center, which is actually located inside the CRC. And so the Family Center helps anybody that's incarcerated there. So you could be, well, not 15, you could be 18, and you could be 75, right? And so their plan is that they're helping people that are parents, basically with the basic parenting skills that you may need, because some of our students may be lacking because of their age, right? And so the great thing about it is that the students are then able to have their families. So whether if it's a girlfriend, the mother of their child, they're able to have them come in and they sit with them for about two hours a couple of times a week. And then the social worker that's there, she's able to tell them exactly, okay, this is what you may want to do instead when you're correcting your son, or this is what you want to do. And since they're with them for so long and they're doing this months on end to make sure once when they're released back into the community, especially becoming a father or a mother again, we do give them credit for it because it could be elective credit, right? Like almost like a parenting class. They're there all day long. They're doing some curriculum with those social workers, too, which is great. The other thing is that I do have a connection there. Mr. Lozano, he was our last guest speaker. He is the Corrections Education Coordinator for MATC. He has a wonderful background as well that he was able to connect with our students a little bit more than maybe what me and Isaiah can talk to. Mr. Lozano, he had a background where he was into things that, you know, he was getting caught for, and he caught some charges as well. The wonderful part about Mr. Lozano's story is that he was able to then go on and get his MBA from UW Madison. And so he was the last guest speaker to kind of pour that hope that our kids may be missing a lot of times, to tell them like, yeah, you may be falling down right now, but that doesn't mean that you can't get back up and do something great with your life later, right? And so I really appreciated him coming in and being vulnerable with everybody because it just wasn't our students. He was telling his entire story to us and also CRC faculty, too. So it was a wonderful experience. With the reentry plan that I gave you guys, that was passed out by Dr. Mo, the purpose of that is to look at what you're doing right now, what you're going to be doing once when you transition back into the community and after that, right? And so a lot of the times the students are like, Mr. Costa, you're all up in our business. I'm like, I know I am, but the point is, is that I want you guys to be good when you leave. And so with the reentry program, and I found this out through CRC, we're able to actually order them their IDs. So that's the Wisconsin state ID, their license. If they don't have another copy of their social security card, we're able to get that for them as well. And so we have it sent directly to the jail. They open it up in front of them, and then they put it in their property. So their property either gets released with them when they leave from the CRC. And if it's the unfortunate situation where they go on to prison, it's released to them after the fact. So they have certain things that they would need for school or opening a bank account. Also, looking at reflection, so we reflect all the time. Clearly, I'm a talker, so I do talk to Isaiah a lot, like, hey, do you think this is working? Do you think this is working? And so we're going to be reflecting again during the summertime and obviously in August to see how things panned out for this year and how we can kind of improve it for next year, right? And then the whole, the main goal at the end of this, because we love student voice, would be that whole mentorship piece, right? That's the last part of the goal. Our students are always talking about that they need that one person that they can call in the middle of the night, and it's going to give it to them raw. Like, you need to hear the truth sometimes because maybe your certain mindset, you keep going back to the same thing, right? And so they're looking for mentorship, particularly with people that they can identify with when it comes to background. Hence why I was having Mr. Lozano come in for our graduation speeches, because we can preach to them all day, but at the end of the day, we don't always come from the background that they're coming from. So it's always good to have someone that's walked the walk with them. I think that's it. Yeah. Oh, this is me, too? It is me, too. Okay. So getting student voices, right? So I actually put together a, what is the word? Survey, thank you. Like a survey. And so with the survey, I just took out some of the key points that I thought from each survey that I got from students that stated that they appreciated a school counselor. The one that I put in bold, I like that we can talk to her and she helps with relationships. Like jail is hard, but going to school and talking to her is cool. Makes me forget I'm in jail. So that made me feel good because it is, it can be a very depressing place, right? And so having them come in and feel like they can actually talk to me about anything, no judgment at all. Some things, yeah, you're shocked about, but you know what? I'm going to let you know exactly where you should go, or is that the type of advice that you need? You just want me to hear you out. So I really appreciate that one.
All right, and some of our data, we just wanted to celebrate, too, within our graduates. So if we just kind of look at the progression of our diploma graduates right now, we are looking at our current graduate roll of 11 students this year. So we're really excited about them. We also celebrate our students in different ways. Monthly celebrations are something we focus on, but that's actually turned into our graduations. So each month when we have graduates that have graduated within that month, we're able to celebrate them towards the end of it so that they have that, you know, right away before, and maybe they are leaving us for any reason. We also recognize the Student of the Month, and we also have attendance celebrations because no matter where we are, we're feeling attendance. We want to make sure that students are valuing that, and that doesn't, you know, we're not immune to that where we are as well. So wanting to make sure that we're encouraging and celebrating attendance within our classes. And this is a really big piece here to thank you for the thank you cards. One of the biggest impacts we were able to give this last graduation was able to pass out to three of your thank you cards to three of our graduates. It was something really special that they got to open along with their diplomas, and you could see that they read them right away. They went right to their space, and we have some really wonderful spread of food, and they truly chose to read their card before going and getting that food for them. So showing that is just a really special moment and want to be able to share our gratitude to you that you recognize them and that they feel seen because of you. So thank you.
And so this last part is just words of encouragement from our graduates that we had this year. So the first one is Mr. Sincere Martin. He actually just graduated this past February. And it said, "To those who struggle through school and thinks it's over because you think you don't meet the criteria or think you can't get it done, don't give up because when you do, you are quitting on yourself and others that want to see you achieve." So I think that really speaks volumes to a lot of the students that we do have, even if they don't graduate with us, but especially the graduates. As you can see, there's other ones up there, but that one definitely spoke volumes.
And what is really special is when they do graduate, they get to share this advice with the others that are in the space who are maybe working towards that graduation themselves. So making sure they see themselves in that as well has been really motivating and happy. So, thank you. All right, that's all we have for you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions?
Just a quick question. So how credit deficient are they when they come to you? What is the range of?
Usually, I would say they're probably three and a half to three years credit deficient. So a typical student can probably have as low as three credits coming in, so haven't even finished not really your freshman year. To Mr. Sincere Martin, when he came in, he had almost 19.
Just to follow up on that, I mean, I can tell you, because before working here, I was working at Bradley Tech, and that is one of the biggest feeders to Franklin South Campus. And I can tell you, a lot of the students that I've had, which didn't accrue a lot of credits, didn't do much when they were in traditional school, are different people. They're absolutely different people. And I hear all the time, you know, I wish I had these small class sizes. I wish I had teachers who would really, really work with me and take that time to get to know me. And it's sort of unfortunate that, you know, they're in jail to get that kind of education that they deserve, that they need. But so my point being that a lot of them, yes, do come to us pretty credit deficient, but they're able to make up those credits pretty significantly during our time with us.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that when we were at the Capitol talking about what eventually became Wisconsin Act 212, one of the biggest questions that lawmakers had for us was, how are you going to make sure that the education that these students get is appropriate if it's not contained in your accountability score? And my response was always, while we still care about them as students, but I just want to say, you guys are knocking it out of the park there. These students are getting the education that they deserve and more. So we appreciate what you folks put into it and what administration has put into this, because these people are important as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Thank you.
All right, community comment. I have one person for community comment, and it's Paula Dreyer, who is not from Franklin. So I will ask the board again if it is okay.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Ms. Dreyer, please.
I promise, it's short. I just wanted to take a moment to thank all of the school board members, including the newly re-elected members of the Franklin Public Schools, for your dedication to our school district and for listening to my concerns and all staff concerns when it comes to important issues like retaining excellent staff and excellent health insurance. Perhaps to some of you, I speak too much, but please know that it's because I love the students of FHS and my heart is in the right place. And I would like to stay here until my retirement and be as healthy as I possibly can be. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The school board calendar, there's a community listening session on Monday, April 15th, at the Saber Center at 6:00. A key communicators meeting on Tuesday, the 16th, at Forest Park Middle School at 5:00, and a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, April 24th, and Wednesday, May 8th, both at 6:00 o'clock, both here at the ECC. District Administrator update, Mrs. Bennen, please.
All right, thank you. So last time we were together was before spring break. So a few things to kind of catch us up on things that rounded out that week and have happened since then. Mr. Pat Gaines spearheaded March Madness at the high school. Again, if you haven't been there, it's a great spirit activity. Not quite all the students fit in the gym, but we did have 60-plus staff members and a full gym watching a basketball game, whole variety of activities. They also raised money. They raised over $800 for Best Buddies and Relay for Life. So we're thankful for Pat and all the work they put into it and just the positive spirit it brings right before we head out for spring break. Last Friday, Mathnasium partnered with us to have a math night at the middle school. So we had nearly 200 attendees, about 80 students within that. And it featured 10 interactive stations that parents and their students could participate in and kind of get engaged in math and what that looks like in middle school. So great shout out to the team there to put that together. And also Lauren Zamboros, I always say the name not quite right, so forgive me. She led our FHS business, Future Business Leaders of America in Green Bay for their state-level championships or competitions. They placed fifth overall as a team, and we had 17 students that placed first through fourth that will continue on to national competition. So pretty exciting for that team. Then kind of moving forward, looking forward, I should say, next Friday, we have our last professional development day for the year. We're always very thankful to our parents for hanging out a little extra with their kiddos that day so that we have an opportunity to learn and grow together. With the lack of substitutes, it's really beneficial to have these days where we don't have students, so our teachers can learn together, and we're not worried about having loss of learning time in the classroom with or lack of substitutes. So it's exciting to have our last day. Saber Center, we're going to hear from Tracy Stewart tonight, but just some exciting things coming up. Forte Theater opens with Hello, Dolly this coming weekend for the next two weeks. Following that, on Sunday, April 28th, we have Mut's Gone Nuts, which looks like a pretty entertaining show as part of our Bringing More Community series in. And then, once May hits, if you're not signed up for the Building or School bulletins, you'll want to do that because you can fill your calendar with a variety of Saber Center events, as all of our schools are performing there at some point in their end-of-the-year school concerts. This Friday, Robinwood has their family night. And as a part of that, we also have a presentation with our Wisconsin statewide parent education initiative, or WISPE, that you've heard quite a bit about. So this presentation will be for our families with students that have students that have an IEP or a 504 to help to navigate that world and what goes on there. So opportunity to reach out to our elementary families, something new that we've added to that parent night this year. And then at Franklin High School, we have the Relay for Life fundraiser for American Cancer Society is also coming up. That's Friday, the 26th, so near the end of the month, from 5:30 to 10:30 at night. It's a really neat event that our students spearhead to raise money in the community. So there'll be more information on a lot of those in the district newsletter tomorrow, but just a lot of really exciting things that have been happening and are continuing to carry forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Reports, presentations, and other board business. Saber Center update, Mr. Stewart, please.
Hello. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Tracy Stewart. I am the Managing Director of the Saber Center for the Performing Arts, as well as the Technical Director, so all of the equipment and facilities therein. It's my annual update. I always like to start with the FPS mission statement, as well as the Saber Center mission objectives. The mission of the Saber Center is twofold. It is for our students, both in performance and technical pursuits of live entertainment, to hone their skills and get exposure to various types of entertainment options, as well as a community center for community organizations to bring in events for rent, as well as we're developing a, as Ms. Bennen mentioned, we have developed a community series aimed at hiring in professional works to present to the community. And we have just started that this spring. So our current usage is, I kind of have three different areas there of our performance classes, as far as our music department and theater departments, as well as the academic usage for academic meetings during the day, club meetings, things like that, that really, we don't have another space in the school that's large enough to accommodate some of the activities and class meetings and such that are required, as well as the community events. Most of these are rental events over the last year, including Forte Theater Company, who does their entire season at the Saber Center. And they have been a very welcome member of the community, being based in Franklin. Most of these organizations are based in Franklin, like Next Step Dance, the Distinguished Young Women, their director is a Franklin resident, as well as Academy of Performing Arts, Forte Theater. Excuse me. That is an alarm for some reason. All right. So with our Saber Center rentals, like I said, we have mostly Franklin organizations. Nacha Panha Dance Company has booked their entire recital season at the Saber Center the last two years. That's multiple weekends over the summer for Indian classical dance. It's a single It's a, it's a single performer typically, and it's like a three-hour artistic dance, interpretive dance, basically storytelling through movement and expression. And all of these Sabre Center rentals are staffed by our student technicians that have learned throughout the year, our soundboards, lightboard. And it exposes them to something different, something that might not necessarily have a script coming in. So they have to think on their feet and come up and organize their work so that, so that they can actually bring the lighting and, and operate the sound system in kind of an off the cuff manner versus what we typically do is having multiple rehearsals and a script and, and everything is very well laid out. It's more of a, more like what I used to approach as a professional doing freelance events of, you may not know what the song is until it starts. And you have to, in, you have to convey the, the emotion of that song quickly in the lighting and, and tune the sound. So it's, it's a good experience for our students to, to get a different type of exposure with having these rentals. And it does provide some revenue to the, to the school district. So, facility upgrades this year, I'm always trying to develop and bring in new, new experiences. I found a very good deal on a fiber optic star curtain. It's a curtain that has plastic fiber optics that convey light through the curtain and it looks like a starry night sky. The Northern Lights Theater at Potomac Casino was closing and I found the, found the listing for the star curtain, got a very good deal on it, had the budget. So went ahead and picked that up. As well as a new LED lighting row that I purchased just before the Spring Musical this spring that allows us to light our backdrop from above and below, so we can get more, more effects. And it's a little different type of, type of lighting instrument. We can also use it for some flash and, and some visual interest onstage in different ways. The increased storage capacity in our organization is more of a facilities upgrade. Through the Foundation Fashion Show, we had a, had one of our technician students involved in that and raised some money towards getting better organization. Because we have limited organization and with more activities happening in the Sabre Center, just to keep costs manageable, it's good to save things, but having a place to put that safely and keeping it organized is important. So, ticketing system, no changes from last year. We've, we've been using LUDIS event ticketing and Anywhere Seat, which is a subsidiary company of LUDIS. They're based in Michigan, developed by a high school theater teacher and a couple of his former students that got into computer programming. It's a very low cost, it's no cost to us and very low cost to, to our patrons. I think a $20 ticket usually incurs about a dollar twenty in, in fees on, on that. So much less than something like Ticketmaster or something. Very user friendly and I've been quite happy with, with using that. Our events this year, between all of our department events, rental events, everything, we have had over 22,500 patrons through the doors for all of our events this year. We keep a tally of, of ticket sales, as well as we do counts at, at public events that are not ticketed. We do a, a seat count. So that's approximate, it could be plus or minus because not everybody's in their seat when we do the count. But, but that is a, that is a significant number, 22,500 people coming through our facility. So the Sabre Center is definitely a very public, publicly seen area of the school. We had 25 tech crew students. Sorry. We have 25 tech, tech crew students learning lighting, sound, stage, stage setup, things like that through our theater department and other music department events throughout the year. And in our theater department alone, I put all of our theater department, both high school and middle school in here, and you can see there are 25 crew members, 16 cast members in the fall play, 33 cast members, 18 crew student musicians, and 21 crew members in the, in the high school play. And then the middle school drama club had 13 student crew and 31 cast members. The crew members, it was actually capped, they had over 30 applicants. But for student safety and just them getting, getting, you know, some value out of participating, we did limit it to three crew members in the control booth and 10 doing the, doing the set building, painting and such. It's hard to manage too many students in the, in the shop and we do have the students truly build and paint the set. You know, our, we have a carpenter that's hired in through activities and he mostly just directs the students, instructs them, guides them on it. But the students actually do the, do the bulk of the actual building for all of this program. This is, this shows a very strong theater program, especially for a school that currently does not have a curricular theater program. So to have, you know, over 30, 40 students involved in theater as an extracurricular without being exposed to it in a curricular environment, I think goes, goes to show that, that is something that, that is desired by the students. That's actually how I got into theaters, through the curricular program at, at my high school. Next is the community event series. This year, we had two, two events. This is a very new thing for me. I've, for years, I've been the technician setting up the events, running the lights, making sure everything's set and prepared. It is a new venture for me to be the person actually booking in, dealing with the agents, dealing with the tour manager in, as a venue host. So it's been a, been a learning experience for me, as well as learning the marketing end of things of, you know, how do you get people coming to the shows and developing, developing that aspect. So we, we had Celtic Angels in March, or in, at the end of February, sorry, at the end of February. And we have Mutz Gone Nuts coming up here in a few weeks on April 28th, hope to see everyone there. Tickets available at sabrecenter.ludis.com. Tickets are reasonably priced, $24 for adults, $14 for, for children. And a lap seat is actually free if the parent has a small, small child that can just sit on their lap. That's, that's allowed for this, for this. So to develop this further, I learned a lot during Celtic Angels of different areas that we can improve, different things that we can develop. Next slide, please. There we go. One is having strategic marketing partners, not just relying on like Facebook for, for advertising, advertising, but developing some media, some more media partnerships to, to get word out in the greater community. Also adding concession sales to boost the bottom line. We didn't have concession sales in Celtic Angels. I'm pursuing having concession sales for Mutz Gone Nuts, just lining up people to, to actually run that. But that can definitely build, boost the bottom line. As we look forward towards having maybe some more music concerts, more modern music. A lot of the patrons for, you know, for more modern music are accustomed to alcohol sales. Being a school district, I don't know how that would pay in, pan out, but that might be a conversation coming up in the future of what, what that may look like, or if that's even possible. Also doing program ad sales, I've been pursuing that for Mutz Gone Nuts to limited success. I need to do some follow-up calls tomorrow on some, some ad flyers that I put out to local businesses last week and just kind of follow up and see where they're, where they're at. There was, it was well received in talking about it, but, you know, getting the ad sales actually followed through is, is of course closing that sale. And also seeking program sponsorships, like full-out show sponsors, like underwriting sponsorship of we're bringing in a multi-thousand-dollar show and having a multi-thousand-dollar donation of having some, a business attached to that of presenting sponsor to help underwrite so that, so that then as ticket sales go, that's actually going more into, into profit rather than just trying to compensate for the expense of bringing in a professional show. All right, and that is actually all I have, I have the website as my next slide, and then questions.
I know you said the middle school crew was capped, are the other?
No, no, the high school, the high school are not. Middle school, we actually provide transportation, we do two build sessions once a week for, I think, four weeks or five weeks. And the beginning one, we provide transportation with a school van to get from the middle school directly to the high school for the first five, and then the next five come in after that. Because of our limited scheduled availability to do that and having more than five middle schoolers in the shop with not having familiarity with the, with the tools or anything, it, it can be overwhelming to have more. The high school, since the students are already there, they can just come in after school. We do cap daily, but not as number of participants. We do have, I believe, six or eight, it kind of depending, bend it on the day too, of, of whether there's more painting or construction going on. Capping it at six to eight per day, but since we're inviting them four days a week, they can come and go and, and so the overall number of participants is not capped.
Chief, please.
Thanks Tracy, and I just think it's worth mentioning that Tracy also does a lot of work outside of the Sabre Center. Like he mentioned the fashion show, but he and his crew very kindly helped set up for that. So staging events, even if they're not physically within the Sabre Center, so appreciate that, just wanted to note it for the record. Now, just clarify for me, none of the kids in the tech crew are getting credit for this? They're doing it just because they love it and they're excited about it, right?
Yep, it is a, is a club activity. So they're getting, you know, activities credit, but, but no, they're not getting any classroom credit. During rentals, they do get paid for the rentals because the rentals pay a technician fee. So they are paid through the, through the district, offset by the renter actually paying, paying fee.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, please.
I just want some clarity on what sort of the financial goal of the Sabre Center is. Is the goal of the Sabre Center, like how does your budget look? Is the goal to be net zero at the end of the year, or are we still feeding him? Help me understand how this fits into our overall budget.
Mr. Cromie to, to address.
So, really, the only part we're looking to break even is the community series and not necessarily each event, but as a whole. So, as Tracy mentioned, we have our first step in with Celtic Angels and Mutz Gone Nuts this year. Those are really like trial runs and how's this all going to work, what are we going to do? We're like using those two as a learning piece for '23, '24 and '24, '25. Tracy has other irons in the fire for what we're going to do, we're going to look to have that break even, break even. But as far as covering Tracy's salary, a budget for the Sabre Center, that's part of our district operating budget. If a technician is brought in, as Tracy mentioned, then the renter has to pay for that. So then those are put back as a dollar-for-dollar trade to the.
So when you say the community series, does that just mean the, the acts that Tracy's hiring to bring in?
Correct.
As opposed to the renters?
Correct.
So the renters sort of like offset the cost of running the Sabre Center, but it's by no means a break-even phenomenon?
Essentially offset, but like we're not running it to break even. If we have availability outside of our normal schedule, talk to Tracy and tell her like, let's rent it.
Yeah, the schedule's pretty booked.
It's not, it's not rented to offset salary and benefits and Sabre Center budget.
Okay. And if, like the theater kids do fundraisers, that just is sort of managed through the activities fund and goes sort of back to their plays specifically, is that accurate?
So if they do fundraising, yeah, it's essentially for kind of the theater group. So I know Tracy has started, refresh my memory on what that's called. The National Honor Society?
Oh, the thespian, thespian society, yes. Yep, yeah, there's an international thespian society group that, that has been approved through activities and I'm getting, it's an international organization, over a million emeritus members, more than 30,000 members per year as active high school students. I'm, at the end of the, the Spring Musical, I've tallied points and I'm putting that together for induction because there's a certain level by the international alliance of similar to National Honor Society grade point, you know, of, of admission, admission threshold.
It for me.
Please.
So the rental agreements, there's no risk, that's all pure money coming in?
Yes.
No cost?
Yep.
But the community events, there, you, you always talk about the bottom line. So is that going to be ever managed separately, or is there going to be any kind of separate governing board that oversees that? Or is it just all on you, you took us all on with just?
I have, I have actually brought in a, I've invited, an invited committee to help bounce ideas off of. I had one committee member have to step out because of the new, new job that took him away from the area. But currently, we, we do have a three-member committee that, that I work with.
There's oversight?
Yeah. Well, Mr. Cromie is most, most of the oversight because any of the, any of the payment processing does go through the, go through the district office for that. So financial oversight is Mr. Cromie. As far as guidance oversight, Mr. Cromie and, and the committee.
So Tracy and the committee will bring ideas, we'll talk about them when I meet with Tracy at our monthly meetings and then we'll go from there. So part of it's going to be like, what does it cost to have that group in, what do we anticipate ticket sales will be in? Those are things Tracy can work with his network of people to figure out, like what does that all mean? But I'm more interested in wanting to know, what does the commi, the committee say that we should have? So we should, my opinion is we should be as diverse as possible because we want to hit as many people as possible and get as many people in the door. So if we only have plays, we're only going to get people that like to see plays. If we have concerts, to Tracy's, one of Tracy's points earlier, we're going to get a different demographic of people in there. If we have Celtic Angels, we're going to get a different demographic of people, right? So we're trying to get a myriad of people to come through the doors and see the Sabre Center and the cool things that are happening at the high school.
As much data as you can collect on those people to try and find those trends and those patterns, so we can build our audience over time.
Yes.
It's going to be vital.
And I do consult with a, a member organization called the Wisconsin Presenters Network. It's a network of different venue managers throughout the state for, you know, for contact with agents, different, different entertainment options of people that are coming through the area and also routing, which can save money if a, if an entertainment group is already coming in to Green Bay, but they have an availability the next day, we wouldn't compete for audience and they could come down to Milwaukee. And so then, so on their trip up from Florida or California, they can hit two Wisconsin venues and it helps with their travel expenses.
When people use LUDIS to buy tickets, do we capture that information and have them on a?
Absolutely, yeah. Our, our email list for that, for sending out marketing emails sits at about 3,800 emails right now. And I, I typically send out no more than one a month of, here's the upcoming events, you know, here's any detailed deals. If we do have a special, you know, discount offer or something like that, I might push out a notification on that. So far, I've been using that for, basically since the first of the year and haven't had anyone contact me basically saying, hey, I don't want to get those emails because I'm not like overdoing their inbox with a message every day or two or three a day.
What's our goal with capacity for, for, not, not number of people, but for amount of events?
The number of events.
That's what I was just going to ask, what's, you know, you had two this year.
Yep.
What is, are you hoping to do another two next year, or are you hoping to go more?
Hoping to do three to possibly four. I can't fit more than two in my spring because of the amount of curricular and rental events. Most of our rental events are annual events, they, they like to come back at regular, at a regular time in the year. So I can kind of manage with that. But I really can't fit more than two in my spring, I could fit a couple, a few more in my fall, I didn't have any in the fall. But I think capping it at around that four right now, if there is interest and demand in the community, we could possibly open it up to more of the shoulder season of very early summer, late, late summer. Then we're competing with a lot of the outside events like Summer Fest. Then we're competing with a lot of the outside events, like Summer Fest and and different festivals going on around the area.
So I would just add to that. I think the goal, the ultimate goal that Tracy and I have talked about is kind of having one per month during the school year of large events. So we have a fall play, we have a spring musical, that takes care of some of them. The Forest Park Middle School play, that's going to take care of another one. Forte has some big things, that's going to take care of some of them. And how do we fit that gap? Is it going to work out perfectly, one per month? No, like, the the dates aren't going to totally align like that. But that's kind of the idea, is we provide something to the community once a month where they could come see the Saber Center. Some of those will be the same, right? We have a high school play, we have a middle school play. So it's a play. But the topic will be different, certainly. But can we get those things spread out that are going to invite, again, a myriad of people to come see something cool at the high school?
And if you look at the way the website, the first page of the website is, I have those events mentioned in the, on the cover page of, you know, our two school productions, the three Forte productions this year, and the two community event series as kind of our, our marquee events for the, for the community to come in on top of what the school district does with music department and and elementary schools.
Great. Anybody else?
Yeah, just, you mentioned a 22,000, 585 attendees. How's that compared? What's the trend? What was it last year? Not to always compare.
Last year, it was a little bit less than that because Forte didn't, didn't do all of their shows at the Saber Center. We didn't have quite as much. The year, the years before that, we were coming out of COVID. So it was, it's all up in the air. And I don't have records from before COVID of all the events.
I thought of one more thing. For future reports, and I don't know if anybody else would like to see this, but it might be interesting to see that number broken down by what percent is community events versus rentals versus school performances.
And the trend year to year, you know, now we have this 22,000, 585 for this year. And then next year, we could compare that.
I can certainly do that. Let me, let me make a note of that, and I will have that prepared for next year.
Right. Anybody else?
Just thank you, Tracy. That's, you're wearing many hats, you're wearing them well.
Yeah, thank you. In fact, I need to head back to the Saber Center because Forte has a rehearsal tonight.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we'll move forward with the communications update. And Mr. Kafka, please.
Evening.
Evening.
My name is Chad Kafka. I'm the communications specialist for the district and coming to you with just an update on how communications has done over the past year. Typically do an annual update, submitted a report and the board docs. So if you have that available, I'll just be kind of going through that. Sorry for the audience, there's no screen visuals up above, but just kind of giving you an update on our communication efforts as a district. So as we look at the reports, the different things that are included in the report are results from the winter 23, 24 communication survey that we did, that we pushed out to all of our families and various methods, using various methods. And that is coupled with the, the survey results from last winter when we did the same survey. So we were using last survey kind of as a benchmark and then giving comparisons for this year. So I'll go through a little bit of that. I'll talk briefly and give an example of other metrics we monitor outside of that communication survey. I'll give you an update on the 21, 24 communications plan. I'll give you an overview of the communications mediums and the ways in which we communicate out to all of our various audiences. We'll talk a little bit about Franklin Forward work that's been the majority of my focus this past seven, eight months or so, and and some of the examples there. And then I'll end with some social media metrics, some highlights, things that just give us kind of a gauge when we're seeing the things that we push out on social media and what's grabbing attention. And then talking about how we'll be embedding future communications efforts within the updated coherence plan that is being worked on and going to be brought to you soon. So kind of as a little bit of a background and a department summary and history kind of combined. So the communications plan really started back in 2018 when they started a person in this role full time. They developed a three-year communications plan in an effort to figure out the work that would be embedded and implemented into the communications department, if you want to call it that, for the district. So that was the first three-year plan that was then revised in 2021. And so there is a link to that in your, in your board docs as well, and kind of that, that one-page overview that I've brought to you the past updates and kind of gone through how those efforts were. So that's been kind of the, the mode we've been operating under. Those efforts are being in kind of embedded and infused now in the work of the department, as well as anything that we're planning communications-wise will be in the coherence plan going forward. So I kind of set the stage with that as we go through and talk about this and how that'll kind of morph and change a little bit as we go forward. Talking about the survey results. So overall, the survey results, when we did the survey last year, we had 635 responses. And then this year, we only had about half of that. We only had about 300 responses. All the ways in which we push things out were the same. We had it featured in our newsletters. We did direct emails to our families. One of the things that we're thinking about, if we continue to do a communication survey like this in the future, is is morphing how we get it to parents for ease of filling it out. Some of our Qualtrics surveys, as you guys have probably taken, that have children in the district, you have to put in your student's ID number in order to authenticate and go forward with that. Qualtrics has a new feature where we can kind of bypass that and directly get the message to the family, and then they can just go in and take the survey. So we're exploring that for some of our future surveys in an, in an effort to increase responses. Some of the highlights of just that I'll pull out from this, I won't go through all of them, are top sources of information that families responded to, where they get the information from the most. Our weekly school bulletins continues to be the top. Those go out weekly. Those are produced by our secretaries in our buildings. I coordinate with them whenever we have districts messaging that we want to be consistent. We have a shared doc where we park those messages, and then they put those into their bulletins.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
That comes out as an email. I get those. Do you track open rates on those emails?
We do, yeah. So the Smore tool that we use, if you, if you think of the emails you get, you have to click to go to the newsletter. And so we have that data for, for open rates and such. So we do track that, and we look at that. And the weekly school bulletins are always high because I think with their, with, I would assume with parents having their children directly at that school, that's where they're probably turning for most of their information. Same with our school messenger notifications. When we do our, our email blasts, our text message blasts, our phone call blasts, that is another way that parents have said that they receive information the best from us. And then the third top source was our district newsletters, and we track the metrics on that through Smore as well. And those tend to, I think I've shared with you the last two years, kind of the graph, the beginning of the school year tends to be pretty high because, you know, school's starting, everybody wants to know what's going on. And then it kind of dips down around, you know, holiday time, and then it comes back up in January where people reengage a little bit. And then it kind of like, kind of falters out as the year comes to an end. So that's just a trend we've been tracking in my, my four or five years now doing this role. Of note, one of the fourth area, which was super important, was direct contact with the teacher or staff member was ranked as fourth as being of value from our family. So from that, we can ascertain that those direct communications from teachers are super important, whether it's a note home, whether it's a quick email message, whether it's a phone call. I know that our principals work with our staff on that. And I feel that through this survey, we see that that is valued. And so we want to see that that continues at all levels. In our survey, we kind of broke things down looking for feedback on our one-way communication efforts, one-way communication when we broadcast and push out information. That was the first area that we asked a few questions around. The highlights from that are that, one of the questions was on frequency of how often our families receive our newsletters from us. We were asking if they prefer receiving them once a week, like they do now with the school bulletins. They do. That was far and away the, the top choice. And then they continue to prefer our district newsletter every two weeks. And so those graphs there just kind of show how that's, that's kind of the mode that our families have become accustomed to and prefer. From both of our surveys, our 90 to 95% of responses view our one-way communication efforts favorably. So we gave them the different ways to rank things. You saw that in some of the, the graphs that you received. So that was, that was high and remained high. Preferred social media platforms, so Facebook is the top preferred social media platform of our families, with Instagram as a second. And Instagram, I think I've shared with you in the past, tends to continue to kind of creep up more as a, as a visual medium. Interesting to note that Twitter is on a decline. I don't know with all the changes that Twitter's made and calling itself X and things like that, if people just aren't using it as much anymore. But we tend to, from the survey, we don't see that a lot of people are using Twitter as much as in the past. LinkedIn has crept in there as kind of a, a social media platform that our families mentioned as a, as a top of their choice. We do have a LinkedIn page. And so what we see with that is, we haven't really pushed content to our LinkedIn page much. Our staff tend to, like, if they're working in Franklin schools, they attribute that with the page. That's mostly what we've seen. But we're, I'm looking into ways to kind of, when we push content, to also simultaneously push it to LinkedIn, because I think that would just help grow some audiences there. Our two-way communication questions. So we asked about just our two-way communication efforts, and it was about the same. It was about that 90-ish percent viewed our communication favorably, which continues to be high as it has over the last few years. And then our, our last area that we ask about is our passive communication, meaning things that we put on our website or store someplace for our families to access, access. It's not a one-way, it's not a two-way, it's more of a, if they, if they need to find that information. And so we ask questions along the lines of, how often do they visit the district website or the school's website? Both those answers were occasionally, which is customary with a website. You go there when you need something. Our top three areas that people tend to visit were reported as the calendars being far and away the top choice. Power school related to grades and course information, and then lunch menus. And that's typical of schools in general. Some of the, the conferences I've attended and sessions I've attended where we talk about school marketing, those are, those are always the top ones. Also with our passive, rating or quality of our passive, again, is in that, you can see the pie charts there, kind of in that 90% view it favorably. And then our overall communication efforts continue to remain high. So in that, in that, kind of, when people rank it on a five-point scale, five being the highest, that five, four, three, those were all, those were all ranked high for our communication efforts. So overall, with the survey, was a little disappointed that we only got back 300 responses, was hoping for a little bit more. What's, what's key to know here is that communication survey was, was to kind of gauge when we categorize these communication efforts, you know, how were people receiving that over these last few years. So as we look at, look forward with the coherence plan, we're going to talk about if we continue with a communication survey. If we do it, maybe we don't do it in a yearly format. Maybe it's every two years, like a dipstick of how people are feeling because these results really are the same, even though I know the, the population's responding, we're a little bit different. And then also, we continue to get feedback from other areas, like our family engagement survey. We have some communication questions specific in there that we pull from, and that was the next part of the report, was just an example there. Was something that we, we purposefully targeted was making sure that our families could access language translation when needed. So I gave some examples there about ways in which we do that, how our Smore newsletter tool has a translate feature in it. We also, last year, we worked with our building secretaries, being the front lines of the, of the school, so that they had the right methods to translate if they needed to with a family. If a family was coming in, in person, or if they were on the phone, we, we did a session with our secretaries to kind of teach them how to use Google Translate. And anecdotally, it was great. They shared, when I got together with them recently, how, you know, they'll grab their phone when they know they're talking to someone with a different language background, and they'll, they'll use Google Translate to get that quick response and kind of help the parent get what they need. So, so that was seen as favorable on our family engagement survey. Again, just another place that we track communication efforts through specific questions. Our communication plan recap, so the page that kind of has the grid on it. So this is when I did the annual updates for you in the past. I came and gave you status updates on if these particular tactics and strategies were ongoing, developing, gathering. So I am happy to say I didn't, I didn't flesh it all out this time for you because really, all of this work from all these tactics is embedded in the work that we do now on a regular basis. So as I mentioned in the, the report there, these are all ongoing efforts in the, either in the final stages as developed or in development for being part of the work that we do. So I didn't want to bore you with going through all those tactics again. I listed there are different communication mediums, the ways in which we communicate out, our building bulletins weekly on Mondays, our district newsletter every two weeks, our internal staff Franklin Fine newsletter every two weeks, our Franklin Neighbors publication, not our, not our publication, the Franklin Neighbors publication that goes to some of the subdivisions in the community. They let us put stories in there for free, which is great because then we take some of our, our social media stories or stories that I gather, and we're able to get those out to an audience. We do our, we continue our opening doors, one-page insert in the city newsletter. That goes out four times a year. And so we've been using that as part of our strategies with sharing about Franklin Forward work and, and other, other just great stories that are happening in the district. And then this year, as you know, we started the Franklin Focal Point. That's our own publication that we put out. Our plan is to do it twice a year, or possibly three times a year, will depend on the budget and such, if we're able to do that. But that is a direct mailing that goes to all district homes. And so we've put out two so far. The first one, we submitted to Whispera, which is the Wisconsin School Public Relations Association, and we won an award for it. So we were ranked as the best in category for a publication amongst six other schools. So was happy to see that that was recognized for, for that. And then obviously, all the digital, other digital ways in which we get things out. I mentioned school messenger. We have our website. I manage our district-level social media with sharing stories when we can there. And so those are just the different mediums in which we, ways we would, with which we push out our work. The next section was our Franklin Forward work. So I've recapped there just kind of the different things that I've helped with this year in terms of working with C.D. Smith and Cadence Consulting, creating a logo, kind of branding this long-range facility planning, building a webpage, working on designing postcards when we've decided to use those for, you know, passing out to key communicators. Gave an example there of different graphic banners that we have now on our website and just different social media that we're pushing out for letting people know about our efforts so that they can properly participate in the discussion. Social media metrics. So I put in a screenshot of our social media for Facebook from September 1st through April 1st, kind of showing you the top posts. And just to remind you, when we look at those, we're looking for reach, which is the number of people that have seen that story at least once, meaning it got in front of eyeballs at some point. Our top stories, our top three stories from this year were our construction build, which was a top story last year as well. So when we showcased our students out in the community, building a home in the community, that one had a 91,000 or almost 92,000 reach, which is, is crazy. When we were discussing that and talking about how could that possibly be, when you, when you post these things to social media and you're tagging, like, we tag Tim O'Brien Homes because they're our partner. So then that is also helping it to be seen by people that may follow Tim O'Brien Homes and such. So, so I think when we purposely tag things with other partners, that, that only gives us further reach, if you think of it that way. The second one was about students at the high school that were participating in the state-level autos competition. And then the third one was also related to construction build. They had two events, the same home build. And then the fourth one was when Leroy Butler visited with Forest Park Middle School, so that, that got some traction as well. So you can see kind of the other few that are there. If you have any questions about those specifically, I can go into those. What's interesting is Facebook tends to be probably more of our, our parents and community members. Not that Instagram isn't. Instagram does tend to be some of our student population. Student population will follow our Instagram accounts, as we've seen. So when we look at the Instagram top three, the first story was about one of our students who was a national merit semifinalist. And so that was a post about him. So that was the top story. And then the second one was just a first day of school posting, lots of excitement in the air. That was about just random pictures from the first day of school back in September. And then the third one was about homecoming, the homecoming parade. So if you think of the students following that or probably liking that and, and, you know, showing that engagement, so that, that's where we see those posts, that the audience for those posts. That wraps up my communication plan. As, as I said earlier, what we're looking to do is, is to not create a new three-year communications plan because all this work has now been embedded in the communication efforts, but rather, as we build the coherence plan, find those opportunities in the coherence plan where we can make sure that we are communicating effectively and pull metrics from that and, and look at what that looks like going forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Questions?
Well, yeah, I'm primarily a community member at this point. And I just, what are your, and I think about the community, I think about the connections there, sports, you know, sports.
Sure.
Where do I get my sports fix? I mean, I go to the website, no sports. Where do I get that? How do I know where our teams are doing? What's, I mean, if you get, if you have a community newspaper.
Sure.
That's what you're going to see, a lot of sports. We don't have a community newspaper.
Right, right.
I guess.
Yeah, I mean, anytime we have some accolades to share about our sports, we're, we're putting those into our newsletters, which our newsletters are subscribable to community members. If a community member comes to any of our webpages, they can sign up to receive those newsletters. So digitally would be the way. A lot of the sports teams have their own social media accounts where they're promoting and sharing about girls' basketball, boys' basketball, and things like that. Does that answer your question?
I don't, well, to answer the question doesn't help me in terms of where do I get this stuff.
Sure.
Any chance webpage on how to follow team sports? I don't know. Any chance webpage on how to follow team sports? I don't know. I need a little help here.
We could look at that. So we have, I mean, the athletics page, the athletics page has links to all of the team's resources. So we could look at adding, if they have social media, you know, adding those links on there for that.
I think that would help.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, we have a lot of great sports teams, and it's
Right.
Pretty, not that we want to overemphasize that, but it's pretty embedded into the, you gotta get kind of deep into the website, really. And I know the, what do you call the thing that slides past?
The banner pictures?
I mean, they're kind of stale. They don't get changed much.
Sure.
Weekly?
Sometimes that's purposefully. It's, is, like, we want to put something up there that is
I gotta see it five times, 10 times?
Yeah.
Before I notice it?
Sure.
Okay, I get that.
Yeah. I mean, right now, it's a banner that's advertising some of our upcoming Franklin Forward work. So that's the first thing people say if they go to our district webpage. And then we tend to put a picture there representing each of ours, kind of three, better place to learn, better place to work, part of a better community. So as we have those pictures, I try to rotate them out. I've been working on rotating them monthly or bimonthly.
Okay. And I said, websites might go-to place.
Sure.
And I think we're, I got the impression that we like the way it is, and we're done improving it. At least the software's stable. We're not going to do a refresh or anything, nothing's planned.
Right. Yeah, the software is, the software's stable.
No refresh plan.
Not, not currently, no.
So it's just incremental changes?
Yeah.
But how do you evaluate? I mean, you ask people if they go there. Are there other tools available to evaluate the efficiency of the website?
So we use Google Analytics. And so Google Analytics tracks, like, hit counts to certain pages. So we have, we can go into Google Analytics and see which pages are most popular and how often they're trafficked and things like that.
And it's going to be the lunch menu and the calendar and the
I guarantee, I guarantee those will come up.
What about community members? What are they hitting on? Can you, can you kind of tease out information that's not apparent?
Not from clicks, because we'd have to, not, not from, because it's just, it just measures the clicks and measures the traffic. It doesn't give us, like, Linda Witkowski went to this page at this time. There's nothing like that that we have.
And there's no way to track community use of the
No.
No.
It's just there, it's a passive information source.
Well, what if we could, you know, grow that to be something big? We don't even know how big it is, but we know that it's mostly parents.
Well, I mean
That could be a bigger thing.
Yeah. It's, it'd be, it could be there for that audience, but I think that those that are looking for that information are tuning into the social media accounts for, for their sports teams and things like that. So it's, it's not necessarily, you know, having everything on the website, and that's where everyone's going to go, because you're, you're thinking about now, your, your younger parents, your kids that are using their phones to mobily, that maybe they get an app from their sports team that's pushing information to them, or maybe they're following their social media accounts. That's kind of, it's more disseminated than it's always, in the past, it used to be very much focused on a webpage, but now it's very much disseminated information. I would say a lot, I mean, we purposefully push the content to our families through our newsletters. That's kind of our vehicle. And then we'll link to resources that are housed on the website.
Well, and the Franklin Focals, Ben, that's been a big mission when Chad and I were developing that, is that goes to every mailbox. So to your point, if I don't have a student in the community, I may not choose to go to the website as much. Franklin Focals highlighting a couple of things two or three times a year, but we always have a QR code and the website on there to bring them back to it. And then also to say, like, sign up for the building newsletters and the, the bulletins, right, and the district newsletter, so you know more of what's going on if you want to follow in those areas. So it's been one, I would say, new avenue that Chad's explored to get
Yep.
That does go to everybody in the community and offers the opportunity to engage further and clearly lays it out if they want to.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation. I remember six years ago when I was panicking because we weren't going to be able to send paper home with the weekly envelope, anybody, anybody?
Yeah.
And like, nothing would get done, but somehow life went on. So that
Right.
That's good. I would just recommend to everyone here, if you want to know what's going on with students, you need to, you just need to join Instagram. And every student club and student sport and student activity has an Instagram account. And if you follow them, you know what's going on with students in Franklin. So, there you go. This is an N of one. Perhaps there might be a couple more Ns here. I find the newsletters overwhelming. They're, they're practically biblical in nature.
Sure.
And especially things that run every single time. So I'm, and my example of this is, I have been ignoring the thing in the newsletter from the high school since October about submitting a baby picture of my child to the yearbook. I've been routinely ignoring it.
Sure, sure.
Until I got an email the other day. So I don't know if there's a way to sort of then subsegment your newsletter into sort of chronic reminders versus acute reminders.
Right.
Um.
What we've tried to do
N of two.
N of three.
N of three.
No offense, Chad has heard that from me for years.
No, it's fine. No, no, bring it. I, I think our newsletters are too long, too, because I'm trying to figure out how to best do that. What we've tended to do was, if it was an event coming up, we try not to advertise it, you know, too far out. We try to do it two or three issue, issues of the newsletter, weeks out, if it's a weekly type of thing. If it's, if it's the district newsletter, it depends on what it is. And we try to hit, because we think if we hit it more than once, if it's just in there once, and it's only coming out every two weeks, are people really going to see it? So we do try to repeat things. So it's, yeah.
I'm torn on that one.
I know.
And that might be, if you are going to continue your communication survey, something worth digging into.
Yeah.
Because, again, I'm just me, but I become numb to repetition. I think most humans do.
Sure. No, I can see that.
But the email has the topics, so.
I understand that, Linda.
And I'm just kind of digging into what I want. I saw that last
But also, you know, like, I know I don't have a middle schooler anymore, but in the last number of years, we had a middle schooler, and there was always something about, like, if you're dropping off your lunch for your kid, like, really?
Yes.
The people who need to know that are, have probably seen it and are probably ignoring it.
Yeah.
And we maybe don't have to have that in every single week.
I think it was smart that you made a little community backpack section for all the flyers for dining out nights. That was
Yeah, thanks.
That was good.
Yeah, thank you. That's, I've been trying to monitor, I have monitored the clicks early on, I got to go back and revisit it, of, of people clicking through, because the point with that was to centralize those. We get everything wanting to be shared. And so as long as it goes along with our mission, vision, and values, we said we would help promote it if it's feeder programs for our athletics, we will help promote it. If it's fundraisers, you know, those kinds of things. So that was a new initiative this year, and I think it's working. I hope it's working. We didn't, I thought of it after we sent out the survey. I was like, oh, we should have asked about that. But, but yeah, next one.
I think that's good, because, and that actually is, that being in there every week, you know, you can always go back to that backpack. And I have heard parents be like, oh, yeah, I saw a flyer. It's, you know, it's in, like
It's in there, yeah.
People know that that exists.
Sure.
But some of those more, yeah, the, the yearbook thing, you're going to get 12 emails from the yearbook company saying, have you ordered your yearbook? Have you done, you know, like, I don't know.
Right.
I also have not submitted a senior baby picture yet, so.
This is super timely, because I meet with our building secretaries coming up. I think it's next Wednesday. So we'll talk about weeding. I wrote down weeding.
There you go.
Weeding out the, the things that
Weeding for our reading?
You also write down acute versus chronic. I'm pretty excited.
Yes. Acute. I'll make, I'll make a new banner.
Dr. Beer.
Yep, yep. Any other questions? I won't take too much time.
Anyone?
I just, quick, so, I'm, I'm a district website person.
Sure.
No Instagram. I mean, I'll do it. Now I'm going to have my kid tell me how to do it. But I know you're 13, what is it, 3A-3, reviewing, evaluating up to the district website. I mean, I went on there, I'm, I'm more a music person.
Sure, yep.
And I mean, the choir director has been gone for three years, and so I don't know
Is that under the high school section?
Yeah.
Oh, that will get fixed. I did not know that was there.
So, and I don't, you know, there's just other things that I, I just, I look and I'm like, no, this is kind of outdated, or I can't, the link doesn't work.
Yep.
Like, the fonts are different. Boys' fonts, real big, girls' fonts, not so big. So just little nitpicky things that I probably won't notice after my daughter graduates. But that's where I go for stuff. But again, I probably won't even do it after next year, but who knows?
Yeah.
Will I?
Perfect. I will work on that.
All right, anyone else? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Yep, thanks.
All right, 24, 25, Board of Education meeting dates. Of note, there are, the meetings are the second and fourth Wednesday of the month, generally.
When was last year?
Roughly the same as last year, in that we switched, in that February and March are the first and third Wednesday because of, because of spring break, so that we don't have a meeting during spring break. And we switched to only having one meeting in January because of, because the fourth Wednesday in January is during the WASB convention. So it kind of runs into that. So we'll, we'll work around that for only one meeting in January. So, and meetings are at 6 o'clock. There's the homecoming parade, so we switched that one to 6:15 in, in September. So does anybody have any questions on the meeting dates?
Were there any issues with, in September, with open schools and trying to be at that initial meeting?
I think that was the August annual meeting.
The August.
And that looks, with it being on August 13th, 25, I'm sure that's not the night of elementary open houses.
I think we moved it earlier a couple of years ago.
We moved it forward a week or two, I think.
Well, it looks like it's only the annual meetings in August.
Yes.
So it shouldn't be, yeah, I guess it does, no?
It's early enough, yeah.
It's early enough where it doesn't run into anybody going to school or coming back to school yet.
It used to be when we had it that last week of August. It was somebody's open house night, and
Okay.
That's why it got moved.
Looks good. Say number of meetings?
There is one less meeting, because there's only one January meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, great. We will move on from that. We will, that'll be an action item next meeting. Addendum to fiber MOU with City of Franklin, Ms. Zelinski, please.
Good evening. I'm Luanne Zelinski, and a couple of weeks ago, I brought to you an addendum to our MOU with the City of Franklin. Open to answer any questions that may have arisen since last time I was here. Otherwise, this is an action item, hoping to take action on it tonight to get that approved.
I'm looking for a motion.
I move to approve the city and district amendment number one to the MOU partnership on sharing of the fiber optic conduit and termination panels.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Dr. Beer, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that one.
All right, we have a tuition waiver request. Ms. Bennett, please.
Sure. So this is a request, you can see the letter from the family in our board docs. Basically, just a reminder, it's called a, there's a nine and 18-week special request that parents can ask. They're going to break ground in their house. They should move in October. They're just asking for their daughter to start the school year here. If for some reason they wouldn't relocate by that time, there's tuition and movement conversations that happen. They actually, at that time, would come back to us for an additional nine weeks, and next January would talk if action hadn't happened. So we just need to look for, next meeting for board approval of it, if we're ready for tonight to approve it. They're usually pretty straightforward. That's something we could, if the board wanted to, move to take action on this evening, so we can get back to the family, or we can bring it back in two weeks.
I'm comfortable approving it.
I would be fine.
Move to approve tonight.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Sapersky, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Donation from S&amp;C Electric Company. Mr. Cromer, do you want to talk about that?
I'll take this. So this donation of $2,500 comes to us from S&amp;C Electric Company. The threshold for board approval is $1,000, so this is formally coming to you for approval. These dollars are to be used towards our CTE program. There's a myriad of areas there. S&amp;C Electric worked directly with Andy Thompson, so this donation really comes through him and will be used to help foster the programs that are listed here.
Linda, please.
So how long will it take to spend this money? Is there a term limit on spending it?
There is not, but I'm sure Andy will have it turned around pretty quickly.
So next year?
Like, 24, 25.
Yeah, I just don't want it just accumulating, and different programs accumulate this money. I prefer that it be donated and spent.
That's the goal.
Can you assure me that's what, that's what the intent is?
The intent is yes.
Okay.
This is a, it, it seems like this was a similar donation
We had this donation last year.
And was it spent?
The dollars were spent, yes, but I don't know if it was exactly 2,500. I can't remember offhand. But I know it required us to come to the board for approval.
Did I ask this question last year? How is this different from donation? Because the Education Foundation routinely handles contributions and sponsorships from corporations of larger than $1,000. So is it just because this went through?
So the Education, Education Foundation is a 501(c)(3), so that does not necessarily need to follow board rules. The donations are sent to them. The Education Foundation files their own tax return, because they're not part of us. This is a donation directly to Franklin Public Schools.
Okay.
So therefore falls under the board policy.
Okay.
Great. Anybody else have any questions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move, I move to formally accept the donation of $2,500 from S&amp;C Electric Company. Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Mrs. Sapersky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to policies 5222, concussion, traumatic, brain injury, 5321, life-sustaining emergency care, 5375, ensuring the educational stability of children in out-of-home care. Those are all, Mr. Ekman. And 6220, Title I policy, 6312, student promotion and retention, 6731, field trips and extended travel. Dr. Mo. So we will start with Mr. Ekman, please.
Okay, so the first policy, concussion and traumatic brain injury, really just technical changes and some updated language with definitions. Life-sustaining emergency care, same, technical changes and updated language, that's new. The policy ensuring the educational stability of children in out-of-home care, which refers to foster care, some additional language has been added, and I just wanted to make a few comments about that. I shared a, a one-pager from the Department of Public Instruction with the legal references. And basically, over the last several years, the law at the federal and state level has changed with regard to the rights of students in out-of-home care. And the one-pager is just meant to explain some of the key elements of those changes. The first being that children in out-of-home care, meaning if a child is placed into a foster care home, or a group home, or another facility that's considered out-of-home care, they have a right to remain in their school. So that's what educational stability refers to. And then the required elements that are on your handout are the actions that the law requires in order to maintain educational stability for the child. So the main idea here is that school districts and child welfare agencies have to collaborate to make that happen. The other concept is school of origin. School of origin refers to the, the school that the child was attending at the time that they are placed out of the home. So you have an elementary-age, fourth-grade child placed in foster care, they have the right to remain in their class, with their teacher and with their friends. Transportation has to be provided to make that possible. The best interest determination refers to the process required in the law, where the school districts, if there's consideration about changing a child's school, it has to be done through a best interest determination. And that's led by the child welfare agency involving the school districts. In Milwaukee County, that's the Department of Child Protective Services, Division of Child Protective Services, which is a, a branch of the Children's Court. Children have a right to immediate enrollment. Children that are in out-of-home care may not have the enrollment documents put together. We can't hold up their enrollment. And then transfer of records, that has to be done right away. So the intent is to update our policy to reflect the law. So that's why you're seeing a lot of additional language. Yeah.
Yeah, can you just give us a general idea of the scope of this within our district? Do we have a lot of kids?
I was checking, because that question came up. It's, it's less than 10.
Okay.
So it's not a huge number of students, but it can be fluid. And it, it's, it's pretty important when it happens to that one individual child.
And transportation, it seems to be, there's no, it has to be provided, but who pays for it is up to negotiations.
It's shared. It's shared between the two districts, and it's often a three-way, depending on whether it's a foster home or a group home, there are different arrangements for sharing the costs of the transportation.
Okay.
So generally is shared across districts, as well as the child welfare agency.
I know rules, you just negotiate?
Um, no, there are rules in there, um, it's not, uh...
You have to explain them.
Yeah.
It seemed to be kind of complicated, but it has to be, bottom line, it has to be provided and somebody's gotta pay for it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else have questions for Mr. Ekman? All right, thank you very much, Dr. Mo.
I had three.
Just information.
Oh, information, yes, thank you.
I had three policies tonight in addition to...
For approval, sorry.
No, mine are first read.
Oh, okay. The next bunch.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Witkowski emailed me some questions today, so I'm gonna address those questions to the whole board in addition to the situation report, so you can pull up the situation report, I had three policies, the first was Title One policy, again, technical changes, some updated language, some clearer definitions of spending Title One funds schoolwide versus targeted assistance that wasn't documented in there, and then some more clarity around the highly qualified staff requirement. Um, Mrs. Witkowski had the question about what does comparability of services mean, um, the fit, the, the spirit of the law is that we could not funnel all our money to a Title One school and then not balance state and local funds, so you can't use title to offset what you would normally give to all schools, title or non-title with state and local funds, Title One is supposed to be above and beyond, um, what you would provide all schools in the district, so basically you're not allowed to swap out the money and, and pay where it qualifies, it's supposed to be a value add on top. Um, you also had a question, Mrs. Witkowski, about how is highly qualified staff determined, that's qualified by the law for teachers, it's being, um, licensed in your grade span for law, so licensed teachers, basically you're teaching in the area, you're teaching in a classroom that you're licensed to teach for, for EAs, highly qualified is two years post-secondary and associate's degree or passing a competency test, so, um, you can take like an online test at a testing center, that's for schools that are using, um, Title One funds, so if you had a school that wasn't receiving Title One funds, in theory, the staff wouldn't need to be highly qualified, if I'm being honest with you, we are always looking for licensed teacher to teach, um, within their grade span, but that highly qualified for EAs might look a little bit different if the school is not receiving Title One funds, I would say most districts approach that, that they want all their staff to be most highly qualified. Um...
But it's defined differently for EAs and teachers?
It is.
Okay.
It is, yes. Um, how can a parent see a Title One fund, they can ask, we had one last year, um, a parent asked, they reached out to me and we provided that, um, they generally speak to the goals that you would expect them to see around student achievement, parent involvement, um, for instance, there's some rules around involving parents in that, so, um, Pleasant View last year had a, it's called one school, one book, the whole school read the same book, they had parents in to do some things, nobody would know that on the front side, we're not flashing light this is Title One, but that would be a type of activity that would meet Title One, so that plan that we turn into the state in order to release the funds outlines some of those things. What, what is our needs assessment? The plan says you have to conduct a needs assessment, what are you going to use these funds for, typical things, the federal government's giving you money, they ask you how you're going to use it and put some parameters on that.
My concern would be you've kind of eliminated a lot of the things that parents could expect to see happening, and we've referenced the Title One plan, so how do parents know what the expectations are? They have to ask for the Title One plan, cause otherwise it's not in our policy or any kind of administrative information.
I would not say the Title One plan is something that we publish, but it's not secret either, so it, there's a reference to Title One, highly qualified staff and Title One plan in our handbooks, parents would see it there. Do we have a hot ton of parents that ask? No, we don't. Uh, is the plan a secret? No, it's not, the money is pretty tightly ruled on how we can use it.
Right, Mike, the sections that you eliminate though are very parent-specific, you know, what opportunities for parents to do this, what kind of meetings are expected, that's kind of gone away.
I wouldn't say it's gone away, the policy calls for the Title One plan, right, right? The law says to do the plan, so those are included in that plan, if that makes sense. And it could be above and beyond what was listed there, that was pretty restrictive language on we are doing these things, something like one school, one book, that, that we just talked about, that was an approved use of our funds, wasn't listed there, we would not require, right, right now, our Title One funds pay for interventionists largely, if you wanna know, math and reading interventionists, so the plan dictates how Title One funds will be used to support students in tier two and tier three reading and tier two and tier three math, that's what the plan says for this year.
Does it change every year? Apparently it does.
Um, not unless we change our intent to, to use the money, not hugely, right, uh, it's always, so we have schools roughly, the district runs about twenty percent free and reduced lunch, we have some schools that are below that district average that receive, um, less or no Title One funds, so what happens at those schools might look different.
Okay, um, I, I support the changes, I, I feel like I have to check out what the plan is, so I'll be asking you for the plan.
It's fine.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Thank you, anyone else? Angie, please.
I have a question about the, um, promotion and retention policy.
Yeah, I have, do you want, I, I didn't get to that one.
Oh, sorry, I thought you meant in general, okay.
No, sorry.
I have no questions about that one.
So, this is one that has a change that doesn't happen very often, so student promotion and retention, we are actually changing the name of the fo, policy to ask the, add the word, excuse me, placement, so it would read promotion, placement and retention. Um, you asked that question, Mrs. Witkowski, I'm assuming you're gonna ask the same thing, I, I'm not sure, but...
No, I'm not.
Oh, well, that's good, so I'll answer the first part, so, when you look, part of policy review is looking at legal guidance and policies in the area, we are one of the only places I could found that still called it promotion and retention, almost every other place called it promotion, placement and retention, the reason for that is have, we have kids that come out from out of the country or out of state, even sometimes, they might have a different school year calendar, or their kindergarten cutoff is different, or, there is no 4K, or a myriad of things, we have to use these same rules for promotion basically, as we would decide what grade do we put this child in, so, most people have applied this policy when making placement, and I'm just gonna tell you, we don't specify for new kids, but it is for students new to the district in most cases. Um, we also have, I can think of four or five cases right now where a student is homeschooled through a certain grade, and then they come to school in fourth grade, they've never been to school before, do we usually just place them in fourth grade by age? Yes, but we wanna have something to go on, on where we'd gather information about what's best to support that child if they miss school, so that's why placement was added. Um, the second question you have is regarding the requirement that shall include exams, are there set cutoffs? Yes, so state exams have below basic, basic proficient and advanced, the law says that school districts can adopt policies about promotion and retention of fourth and eighth graders, so that's a big standardized testing year, what we've adopted and nothing has changed in that is that list of criteria you see in the policy, so, if a student is below basic on the forward exam for instance, we do not automatically make them repeat the fourth grade, we look at the other things on that list in terms of promotion, if, uh, which I'm assuming what you're asking by that, there's not a cutoff that all students who are below basic on the state standardized test do not, are not retained to repeat a grade.
It's still just one of several criteria you use.
Correct. The law says you have to use that as one of the criteria, but that you can add other things.
And you don't have to beat all of them.
You do not have to beat all of them, no, these are just the things that we'd consider.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Your question.
Um, in the section which you changed RTA to multi-level systems of support?
Yes.
I'm just curious, when you talk about accelerations, does that mean accelerations specifically of a grade level, or couldn't it mean accelerations within a specific course of work?
Both.
Okay.
Well, you want that specified differently?
It might be worth mentioning?
Yeah. Um, you know, and as I hear you say that, what we try to do is say enrichment versus acceleration, I think acceleration, most people mean like skip a grade, and enrichment, most people mean differentiate within a grade for more, so that's a good suggestion, I can change that for next, or just differentiate between the two. Yeah, that's my own rule I try to follow, and I broke it in the policy, so, fair enough, I'll update it, with not, that acceleration is kind of a loaded word.
Yeah.
Third policy is field trips and extended travel, that policy is what brings people forward, when we have Europe trips and things like that, so you know that policy, um, the biggest change that I wanted to call your attention in here is we did not have specific language in here about chaperones being background checked, of course they would be, cause they fall under our volunteer policy, but I felt better that that was public as a part of this policy for parent and community peace of mind that that applies here, not a new policy, not any different, same background check that applies for volunteer policy would apply here, but it's specified.
Questions about that?
All right, any further questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, school board liaison reports. Uh, Mr. Cromer and I went to the, uh, city council meeting last week, um, and they approved the MOU for the stoplight, um, at the high school, um, I don't know if we've heard anything further, but it sounds like maybe it will be, um, maybe the stoplight will be in, uh, by, by the start of school next year, at least we're hopeful.
We're hopeful.
But it will be going in, there will be a stoplight going in, um, in the main entrance at the high school, which we hope will, um, help with safety, or at least improve safety. Um, anybody else? Please, Linda.
Yeah, there was a SWSA meeting, I didn't dial in, I was watching the eclipse or something. But I, I'm aware that there was a new, uh, SWSA Executive Director, uh, hired, effective April fifteenth, was she on the call?
She was on the call, Faith still ran the meeting, but she was on the call, introduced herself, yeah, and she'll officially take over at the next meeting.
And she's a former school board member, long-term public support, school and community volunteer, uh, her husband and her have two middle schoolers, and she has twenty years of marketing experience, I think, might play good, and, um, yes, so we got a new person at the helm. Anything else on that agenda that was...
They went through a lot of the, the vetoes that the governor had and some of the bills that happened, um, prior, so a lot of the updates that we already had emails and things on from the Alliance.
And was there anything, I'm trying to think, did we, did you first do anything that was particularly of interest to us?
Uh, they are working on a plan for, uh, teacher pathway, that's not exactly the terms, I'm not thinking of it off the top of my head, so the governor did veto a plan that the superintendent Brown Deer had been putting together to work with paraprofessionals to try to work to license them towards teacher licensure, because he worried that it would conflict with this other work that they were doing.
And the other big thing though was the delay in the reading, uh...
So they delayed, so as far as Act Twenty goes, we have the items that are supported, um, if districts want to adopt those, you don't have to, the other piece of that is that by July one, a universal screener will be selected for K three that all schools have to use in the state, that will be funded by the state, uh, we will find that out by July one, I was actually just on a, uh, all-state, uh, superintendent meeting today, and DPI said that that is on track, that in twenty-eight days they should have back, um, everybody's RFPs or RFQs on that and start to make some decisions, and we will know by July one, what they delayed with that, to your question, is, uh, originally it was going to be that you had to screen three times a year, all of your students, starting at the beginning of the year, they've delayed that first screen to be, uh, January of twenty-five, you could do it earlier if you want, but, um...
So people could be trained and all that stuff?
Right, cause we won't know till July one, and then they said once they know that, they being DPI, then they will work with that vendor from then through the beginning of the year to think about how to implement, train, um, and get the program rolled out, so, it's going to be rather robust to have all of the state on the same system, uh, that's not happened before, so it'll be, it'll take a little time, so I'm glad that they postponed that. The other one that's still out there, that they're looking for communication on right now is to give flexibility to the start of the school year date, so they talked about that in the meeting, um, right now it's, you can't start till September one, uh, tourism obviously is pushing back hard on that, so they're asking more to reach out to the governor this week yet, because that's on the table currently, um, in conversation.
Just, uh, wanna share that I was in Indiana, and their school year, they go back to school August first, but they have these two-week periods, like for spring break and holidays, and it seemed like a kind of an interesting schedule, but would not be possible here without this hard labor.
It's definitely like a conversation with tourism, that has a huge impact on why that start day was moved originally and why it's...
Right.
Struggle right now, yeah, it is interesting to see what other states do.
Mm-hmm.
And agriculture, I think is also...
I think we're past that, aren't we?
Maybe this part of the state we are, but, there's a lot of agriculture in a lot of the other parts of the state, anyway.
All right.
We're not gonna solve that here tonight.
No.
Anybody else? All right, um, future agenda items...
School and community engagement, sorry, I was waiting for the specific topic.
School and community engagement reports, please, Dr. Beer.
I just wanna mention that I discovered a really neat opportunity for community engagement that I would like to avail the rest of the, inform the rest of the board about, the first Wednesday of the month, there's a group of senior diners that meet at the Root River, um, center, and it's like, I don't know, the past two Wednesdays I went, there were like sixty to seventy-five people there, and I just made little half-sheets and told them, these are all the home varsity sporting events, these are what's going on at the Sabre Center, and so it addressed, I think, some of the, I don't know, perhaps some of the concerns that Linda said, where people, like, a lot of them don't even know what the Sabre Center for Performing Arts was, they hadn't made that connection, so anyway, I'm just gonna make a habit of going and passing those around and making new friends, and so if anyone wanted to go with me, it's the first Wednesday of the month.
What time?
Next time, I believe it's beef tips, just saying, uh, it's at eleven.
I am a member, and I tried to attend, but...
Yeah.
You have to sign up, I always miss the sign-up date.
I just drop in, I don't, you don't...
Now she eat, you just drop into...
Yeah, and then I chit-chat and...
What time is it?
It's at eleven, so, let me know.
It's a much, uh...
Exactly.
I mean, I look at our older population, different decades, the early retirees, this is really kinda out there, living in retirement, they're older people, but still very...
They're very active, and I would say that my assessment was when I turn fifty-five, I would blend right in, so...
What?
But, yeah.
So in a couple of years, we're gonna be seeing you there?
Yes, in a very long time, and then I just wanna commend to you all, hello, Dolly, uh, this, this weekend and next weekend at the Sabre Center, it's gonna be amazing, lots of really amazing performance, okay, that's all.
And we had Jazz Cabaret.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, Jazz Cabaret happened.
I missed that too.
Oh, Linda.
Where do I get the calendar? Root River, Wednesday's eleven.
Well, if you come to Root River, yes, I'll hand you a happy...
Can you just send me the email?
Sure, Linda, I'll send you the email that I type up for.
Angie's Happenings.
That's what it is, I put my email on the bottom, my phone number, somebody called me to help me.
Anybody else with school and community engagement reports?
Could we fly you for a ride? Sure. Anyway.
Thank you, Angie, for doing that.
All right, we will, we will move on to future agenda items, ceremonial oath of office for newly elected board members, board officer elections, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five health insurance proposal, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five board meeting schedule, survey all board members for preferred liaison roles, um, that survey will be going out, um, before the next meeting, so we can talk about it, uh, board self-evaluation discussion, um, policies five two two zero, five three two one, five three seven five, six two two zero, six three one two, six seven three one, i.e. those that we talked about, uh, just a bit earlier, uh, will be voted on, uh, Friends of Franklin recognition, Countrydale School presentation, youth mental health report, technology report, annual curriculum review and adoption, ELA, Buildings and Grounds annual report and Fund Forty-Six, board liaison process check-in, um, and, uh, policies sixty-two ten, English language learners, sixty-four thirty services for children with disabilities, sixty-four sixty gifted and talented, fifty-five hundred records retention and confidentiality of student records, five two six zero search and seizure, sixty-seven thirteen assistive technology and services first read, uh, and I'm, uh, does anybody have any comments to make?
Is the board liaison process check-in connect be kind of combined with the board liaison roles, or should we do that before we decide what roles we want? I don't know what, how are they different, or...
Well, we wanted to, um, get back to the, uh, we wanted to talk about, um, wow, the workshops that we had last fall, um, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure they are different, may, perhaps we could, perhaps we could put them together.
Or with board self-evaluation might be a good place to put it, too.
Yes, um, so that's a good suggestion. Um, anybody else have any comments? All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Mrs. Witkowski, maybe it was made by Mrs. Sapersky, sorry.
Sounds good.
Seconded by Mrs. Witkowski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you, we are adjourned at seven forty-nine.
Thank you.
Linda.
Where do I get the calendar? River, Wednesday is eleven.
If you come to River, yes, I'll hand you a happy.
Can you just send me the email?
Sure, Linda, I'll send you the email that I type up for.
Angie's Happenings.
That's what it is. I put my email on the bottom, my phone number.
Anybody else with school and community engagement reports?
Can we call you for a ride?
Sure.
Anyway. Thank you, Angie, for doing that.
We will move on to future agenda items. Ceremonial oath of office for newly elected board members. Board officer elections. Twenty-four twenty-five health insurance proposal. Twenty-four twenty-five board meeting schedule. Survey all board members for preferred liaison roles. That survey will be going out before the next meeting so that we can talk about it. Board self-evaluation discussion. Policies five-two-two-zero, five-three-two-one, five-three-seven-five, six-two-two-zero, six-three-one-two, six-seven-three-one, i.e. those that we talked about just a bit earlier, will be voted on. Friends of Franklin recognition. Countrydale school presentation. Youth mental health report. Technology report. Annual curriculum review and adoption. ELA. Buildings and grounds annual report and Fund Forty-Six. Board liaison process check-in. And policies sixty-two-ten, English language learners. Sixty-four thirty, services for children with disabilities. Sixty-four sixty, gifted and talented. Fifty-five hundred, records retention and confidentiality of student records. Five-two-six-zero, search and seizure. Sixty-seven thirteen, assistive technology and services first read. And I'm, does anybody have any comments to make?
Is the board liaison process check-in, can that be kind of combined with the board liaison roles or should we do that before we decide what roles we want? I don't know, what, how are they different?
Well, we wanted to get back to the, we wanted to talk about, well, the workshops that we had last fall. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure they are different, may, perhaps we could, perhaps we could put them together.
Or with board self-evaluation might be a good place to put it, too.
Yes. So that's a good suggestion. Anybody else have any comments? All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Still moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Yank, seconded by Mrs. Wackowski, maybe it was made by Mrs. Sopersky, sorry.
It's all good.
Seconded by Mrs. Wackowski. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, we are adjourned at seven forty-nine.
Thank you.